Sankudito me picó.
La manquera me mordió.
Es que sankudito me picó.
La manquera me mordió.
Balaria se este sancudo.
Que me ha venido ya picar.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que la pone el corazón.
Señora, por vida tuya.
Está de tu mucho.
Para esconder, para esconderme.
Que no me piquen los sancudos.
Sankudito por aquí.
Sankudito por allá.
Balaria se este sancudo.
Que me ha venido ya picar.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que me pico, que me pico.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que la pone el corazón.
Que me picó, que me picó.
Que la pone el corazón.
Call this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mael.
Here.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz.
All right, thank you very much. There are no additional items tonight on our agenda, but looking to next week, we will have a resolution providing for the city council's holiday recess, then a resolution for appointments to committees. We're tentatively scheduled, and the city manager will talk about this, regarding a contract for the police community relations consultant. I believe we also have a proclamation for the Boy Scout troop next week as well, and our work session will be on an overview of the Montgomery County Public Schools' capacity report that went out. And there's a possibility that we will have a closed session to update the council on events going on at the Washington Adventist Hospital regarding their move. And then we will be in recess until January 13th, when we will move our city council meetings to Wednesday evenings. And now, we will have comments on our two voting items. Both of them are regarding the Colby Park Playground. One is authorizing purchase of equipment, and the other is authorizing a contract for renovation. Is there anyone here who would like to make comments regarding the Colby Park Playground? No? All right. The other voting item we have this evening is a resolution adopting council rules of procedure. Is there anyone who would like to comment on that voting item? No? Okay. Now, we'll just open it up for public comments. Please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes, please.
Good evening, Paul Krzyszowski, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. I'm here to talk about the noise ordinance. I think you all should realize that noise isn't merely a matter of annoyance or nuisance. Noise is an actual public health issue that we deal with in environmental health every day. Excess noise is associated with a variety of adverse health effects ranging from psychological disorders all the way to cardiovascular effects. So it's a serious issue that needs to be taken very seriously. Our current ordinance, I think, is totally unworkable. It should be completely revised. As many of you know, I work at home and have for several decades, in addition to living there, and most of the impacts of noise that I see are impacts during the daytime when it's somewhat difficult for me to do my job. I'm not talking about yelping dogs, I'm not talking about concerts, I'm talking about things that happen during the daytime in my neighborhood. The main sources that I hear are Montgomery College and Power Lawn Tools. Montgomery College often starts their contractor noise well before 7:00 a.m. in the morning. Last week, we were awakened at 6:22 a.m. with a backhoe going up there. I have measured sound levels up to 90 decibels on the A scale. That's serious enough that if you're standing by that machine, you could experience actual injury to your ears. Leaf blowers and other power lawn tools are another big source of noise in our area. I've actually measured leaf blowers across the street at up to 86 decibels. By the way, when I mentioned this to the operator of those leaf blowers, and I said I would be contacting the city about it, he said, "Go ahead, they won't do anything." Which all just goes to show some of the problems of this ordinance. I would request you not to raise the nighttime limit from 55 to 60 decibels. 55 is actually already above the level where we start to see effects. We start to see effects around 50. Cardiovascular effects have been associated with 50 decibels and greater. Also recognize that the level at which we can comfortably hear each other from a distance of three feet is 60 decibels. So raising this level at night would even interfere with conversations on people's front porches. Both DC and Montgomery County have a level of 55 at night, and I would suggest that you maintain that level for nothing else to be consistent. We need to consider the cumulative impacts of multiple power tools. Last week, I saw three leaf blowers operating at once. If each one of them was 70 decibels, think what the impact of that would be. The city should require commercial users of leaf blowers to register. The section on the ordinance about noise disturbance complaints is really totally dysfunctional and keeps residents from complaining. It's far too cumbersome, this written process. I do have a few more things here, I'll go ahead and submit them writing to the council, but I really encourage you to take this problem more in depth and more seriously than in the minor amendments that you're making to the ordinance now.
Thank you.
Rainier Sol, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. And just tagging a bit on what Paul was saying, leaf blowers are really a big issue environmentally as well as noise pollution, and I am concerned about raising noise limits at night because at night, all the background noise is gone, you hear things much more cutely, and I think you have to give a lot more thought to that, especially since nighttime means the hours from 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., so 6 o'clock in the morning is nighttime, and we have a lot of trouble at 6 o'clock in the morning. And on weekdays, 7:00 a.m. to 10, I think I'm, if I'm, I'm sorry, 10 to 9:00 a.m. is nighttime. So on a weekend, people could be hearing, you could have a louder level at 7 o'clock in the morning on a weekend if I'm reading this correctly. So I think I'm really going to urge you, this is really an important issue, we have heated debates, we have now people reaching out to leaf rakers, actually, which is great, and the Boy Scouts, and looking for many other resources, but there really are environmental issues associated with this, and as well as just the nuisance. And so please, please work on this enough to make it workable and do away with the needing a second person to verify it, because a lot of people are not always around. I mean, sometimes it can be one person who is very afflicted, and I know my neighbor on New York Avenue, right by the college, would be one of those. So I appreciate you perhaps looking at this a little more, or looking to strengthen it in some way, but please don't weaken it. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Tabebo Safa, I live at 7720 Carroll Avenue. I'm here on behalf of my community to say thank you to Mayor Kate and Council Smith for attending our community event. I am, I do have the privilege and the passion to be active in my community, and by default I've become a representative of my community, so I take that to say thank you. A poet lemon is, as you saw, world-known, well-respected poet, usually gets paid in thousands to appear. He gave us, he donated his time, it was a wonderful moment, and thank you very much. And after that, I would like to take this opportunity to say welcome, we would love, it's great to see you there, and welcome the new members of the council. And today, we also have another guest, a member of my team, Yonatan Hadababy. Yonatan is an active member of the Blazer Coffee and the U.S. Africa Dance Business Council team. He lives at 7777 McLavenu, and him and his wife, Walan Sahad, a beautiful baby girl, her name is Lyu, and Yonatan's dad is here visiting, and we invited him to come to see how democracy works in America, so I'd like to welcome, could you please stand in this? Yes. I was telling you the other day how our little community works, how our little democracy works, and I invited him to come and see it in action. Thank you very much, and I'm going to support the new council representing the voice of my community, and I look forward to meeting each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Anne Sargent, 5 Pine Avenue. I have a point of information question, and that is, I see the noise ordinance is on the work session part of the agenda, and can I be here for that and make, ask more informed questions, is my question.
No, usually during the work session, the council will be going over the ordinance with the city staff and the city attorney. Afterwards, we will have, this will become an ordinance which we'll be voting on in January, and there'll be two readings of the ordinance. So the other times that the public can comment on it or ask questions is after tonight, they're emailing your council member or the entire council by sending an email to our city clerk, Jesse Carpenter. At other meetings, you can attend public comment, and at any time, even if the noise ordinance is not on the agenda, speak to it, and then when we are voting on it.
Can I use my two remaining minutes, please, then?
Sure, I can give you extra time.
Sorry, thank you. So my questions are, why would you increase the decibel level at night to a level higher than the county's? Why isn't the current ordinance enforced? I mean, I would think that no means no if it's an ordinance, and I have the idea that, I don't know, I have noise from a lot of sources. I mean, I work at home sometimes also, and when I was working at home for medical reasons, they were repointing the Tacoma, the Victory Tower, which is really annoying, that noise. But there's stuff like that, there's been several years of construction on the roads, there's now leaf blowers, as has been abundantly discussed, there are now leaf blowers, and it seems like, I get a sense that there's almost, almost like republics getting a pass because they make a lot of noise, and they have, you know the story, but they're not real cooperative, and they play music outside at night, and you can't see it from the street, but it's there, and the noise is funneled over into the neighborhood. And I would, I would like for us just to enforce what we do have, but apparently that's not happening. One night, I went over there myself, and the police were leaving, and the noise was still going on, I guess they just told them to turn it down somewhat, and then they turned it up later. And so when I called the police again, they said, "Oh, we sent someone there already," and I said, "It's louder now." So, okay, 30 seconds. So anyway, those are my questions. Why, why in the world would we raise it when there are already problems with what we have? Why don't we enforce what we have? That's the short story. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And I think members of the city council have very similar questions that will get discussed this evening.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Sobolov, I live at 8301 Flower Avenue, and I am here on behalf of the Collaboration Council. I'm the Director of Education and Youth Development. We were fortunate enough to receive a 21st Century grant for Essex House and Park Montgomery. We really appreciate your consideration of additional funding for an additional day of programming for this important initiative. We have 25 young people from first grade through fifth grade who will be involved in many different types of activities, including a very robust literacy program called Voyager, and it's connected by certified teachers. We also have African culture and arts, and this is going to occur throughout the year until the end of the school year. We have a lot of evaluation components as part of this, and training, we just came from a training on African cultural competency. All of our staff will be well-versed in a variety of areas that will make a very exciting program and one that will have measurable outcomes. This is through the Maryland State Department of Education, and it's a federally funded program, it's across the nation, we're one of two in Montgomery County that were awarded. So we look forward to the possibility of working with you. The fifth day will really be helpful to working parents because they, they really need a safe place and a place where there are trained caring staff members to be as part of this program. So we appreciate your consideration and look forward to possible working relationship with you in the future. I've brought with me two colleagues, Kathy Stroop, who is the program direct, project director, and Betty Abibi, who is the site coordinator for Essex House, and who speaks Amharic, which is a language that's, that is predominant among the participants. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Elizabeth Wallace, Ward 1. I'm just going to read an email I sent to Peter Kovar and also Suzanne. This is regarding the noise ordinance. If you go on the website, current website to find out how to report a possible infringement, the instructions read, "Call 911 or make an anonymous tip by dialing tip 411." This assumes, it seems to me, that the noise is happening at that moment and requires police response, but that might not always be the case. For example, the TPS, the elementary school maintenance crew starts a leaf blower several times during the week at 7:00 a.m. A code enforcement officer could be asked to check the equipment at a time convenient to the school staff, not just during the incident. So perhaps two choices could be on the website, one an immediate response, one, and one that requires a less urgent and more diplomatic response. Two, a little bit more on restaurant patrons, I'm sure, well, I don't know about Peter, but I heard a lot of complaints when I was flyering, from Ward 1 residents about the homes near, from homes near Carroll Avenue that are affected by the loud comments made by happy exiting customers late at night, and also by delivery trucks. But while having a conversation with a waiter at Bus Boys, he suggested a sign in the door, at least, as patrons exit, to be respectful of the neighborhood, especially late at night. He said restaurants in 18th and Columbia Road do that. I suggested it to Alex, the manager there, but I don't know if he took it up the ladder yet. Perhaps also a warning sign as they enter the neighborhood with the tip 411 on it as a reminder to residents to use it. Three, patience with no patience. Another Ward 1 resident who lives near the parking lot where used to be Wacken Hut complained of upsetting domestic dispute arguments that erupt particularly in the hot summer. Perhaps the company that provides social services could work with the landlord to put a sign on the exit door like the one recommended to restaurants, but also be persuaded to landscape the property, so that visitors, one, don't park on the sidewalk, but also that visitors would be provided with shade and soothing greenery, so that while those tenders of disagreements that are fanned into marital conflagrations aided by the glare and heat of a parking lot do not happen. I sent a link to Peter about that. Perhaps we can be proactive with the landlord and get some quotes from landscapers interested in doing this. But regarding the communities, that's that. And then regarding the community just under learning grant, thank you very much for the information, it answered almost every single one of my questions except one. From my experience doing background checks for out-of-school activities and mentors, we always required, in that program, two background-checked adults in the room at all time. Not one go out the room to go to the bathroom, always, two in the room, for the security of the kids, and I don't know if you require that as well. Okay, great, thank you. Right, but I mean, always two in the room, so that if one, even if they have a background check, they need to leave, there's still another, there's still two watching the other. Okay, thanks. All right.
Thank you.
I'm Ken Fleming, the Executive Director of Adventist Community Service Center up on Sligo Avenue. I haven't had a chance to offer my congratulations for elections and re-elections, but we've been really busy in November. Our big activity is a holiday giving, which some Tacoma Park residents helped fill bags that were left at their doorways, and Sligo Seventh Avenue Church, the youth, and the school collected 18,000 pounds of food. And Peter, you were there when it was all brought to the front, and we spent the rest of the afternoon processing it. I did something different this year, I tried to bring in some vendors, Washington Adventist Hospital cheer, Montgomery County safety. I hadn't thought through certain pieces of logistics and certain frameworks of those that come to get their Thanksgiving basket, and it didn't work quite as well, but we can fix that for next year, because my idea was instead of coming and standing in line, you know, that you could check out some other services, test center, and some of these kinds of things. I arrived around 8:30 at 7:30 when the doors are unlocked, there was already people standing, that was that bitter cold Monday morning just before Thanksgiving, when it was windy and cold and around 32 degrees. By about 8:30, there was like 40 people already, we let them in, and that's part of what caused the confusion, anyway. We'll serve another, about 700 families on the 14th and, the 15th and 16th for the Christmas holidays, and then we will also be distributing toys to about that many. I also have been given about 800 pairs of shoes, many of them brand-new, still in the box with the tags on them, that were shoe drive that a church did out in Belleville, and I want to, to do that at Christmas time as well. I want you to save the date, I don't have the date, but I want you to save it anyway. Many of you know that I had two massive plumbing malfunctions, one election night a year ago and another one in February. The renovations are almost complete, I would say 90, 95 percent. I also, with grants, three grants, I've got a new roof, I've got a new outside, and I have new carpet, oh, different carpet, let's put it that way, I'm retreading some carpet. And we plan to have open house ribbon cutting, whatever you want to call it, in March, because one of my key staff is away in February, and January's a little too tight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to council comments then. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ledlow, I just wanted to call your attention to the Montgomery County Public Schools' landscaping team today blew their leaves out into the Grand Avenue, where the traffic just runs over them, and I'm sure the remains get washed down in the storm sewer that we are responsible for cleaning. Just call that to your attention, so you can handle it.
Was that from Hine Branch or from Tacoma Park Elementary?
Hine Branch Elementary.
Councilmember Mael? Oh, no, sorry, it's Schultz, sorry.
Good evening, I just, I'm not going to give any comments, I just want to say that I have been suffering for the last week with an absolutely horrible cold, nothing like I've experienced, I can't remember, so I'm going to keep my comments short tonight, but if I break out into paroxysms of coughing and fall on the floor, just stay calm and carry on, and don't worry about me, I will recover in due time.
Councilmember Kovar?
Actually, I don't know if that will change the quorum, we'll check and see. I was contacted by a Ward 1 person who many of you know, named Gene Herman, who's the head of the Independence Day Committee, and he mentioned that although the cost of the fireworks portion of that has stayed the same the last three years, it's now gone up, it's gone up by $1,500, and so I'd like to, not obviously tonight, but I'm just mentioning it now, that I would like to have a budget amendment that could add that additional amount. Obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, we could do it for the same current amount, maybe 10 percent less fireworks, I think in the scheme of things, continuing to do it at the same level would be good and appropriate, I'd like to see if we can find a way to do that. So hopefully we can get that addressed in January. I just wanted to flag that for folks now. And I did circulate an email about it, but it was just a short time ago, so people may not have had a chance to see it yet.
Any other council comments? City manager?
Thank you, I passed out some information. I'll be brief, and you can read it at your leisure. Just a note that this Friday, we will have our staff holiday luncheon, and so after the lunch, offices will be open, but they'll be lightly staffed, so I just wanted to give a heads-up about that, and the council is invited to come stop by the luncheon. I also have attached information requested from Councilmember Mael about who's responsible for upkeep of sidewalks, and it's, it's not an easy answer, the general answer is that sidewalks along state highways are the responsibility of the city to maintain for small levels of maintenance, but anything substantial is generally, the jurisdiction of state highways doesn't always work that way, and so we'll, we'll have some more discussions about how we might identify any problems along our sidewalks, along state highways. I wanted to address the police community relations request for proposal. We did not receive any requests for proposal, but we did receive a letter from one firm that I am impressed with, asking for an extension of time and a consideration of a different amount. I am going to speak with our city attorney's office to identify kind of the next steps and bring that back to you. I have passed out some information, the, on the county council has a Montgomery County zoning text amendment placing an overlay zone in Tacoma Park on CRT and NR zones that would restrict medical cannabis sales to retail locations that are at least 500 feet from a elementary school, middle school, or high school. There is a public hearing on that on January 12th. Because of the county, the city council's schedule, we can simply let them know that the Tacoma Park Council won't have had a chance to address that, that issue before that time. Holiday art sales this weekend, hope you come by here on Saturday. The Tacoma Park Library is having some public meetings about its renovation plans, and I very much like many members of the community to attend. The first meeting that goes over the plans that are now being considered is on December 16th at 7:30 p.m., but if you come at 7, we're also having cake and lemonade for the 80th birthday party of the library. I asked, is that the day that the library serve, and it's not, it's, this is just the 80th year. The, I do have a note here that I have not set up either Christmas tree lights or menorah on the library grounds. Christmas tree lights aren't really possible this year, and didn't want to simply represent one religious holiday. I also want to note that on the website, we have information about the Washington Adventist Hospital's certificate of need, response by the city and by the other hospitals, Holy Cross and MedStar, Montgomery General. And we will have our consolidated financial report on the budgets, on the financial page of the website, as soon as we get an e-version that's searchable. They've sent us one, but it's, it's not searchable, and we do want one that, that is able to be searched for on the, on the website and searched through. We also have on the agenda We also have on the agenda item for next week related to Montgomery County Public Schools, quite a good amount of background information, so people may want a chance to look through, there's two PowerPoints, I think, as well as some background information about Tacoma Park. Answering the questions?
A question for the city manager, I forwarded last week a request for assistance by a resident with immigration issues and the police concern, did that get resolved?
I don't know if it got resolved, I know that the police department was working on it.
Okay.
I don't know the outcome of that, I'll have to find out.
Okay, thank you.
Great, all right, let's move on to our first voting item. This is the second reading ordinance authorizing purchase of equipment for the Colby Park Playground. Would anyone like to move it?
Some move.
Councilmember Mail moved, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kureshi. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Typically we do a roll call vote.
Oh, for this one, okay, for the second reading?
For the second ordinance, yes.
All right, then take it away.
Mayor Stewart?
Here, yes, aye.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Kureshi?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
The next is the second reading ordinance authorizing a contract for renovation of the Colby Park Playground. Anyone like to move?
Some move.
Councilmember Kureshi moved, Councilmember Mail second, city clerk? Oh, any discussion, sorry, or comments on this one?
Councilmember Kovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Kureshi?
Yes, sir, aye, I don't know which one.
Either one, it means the same. Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, now moving on to the resolution adopting council rules of procedure. We discussed this last week in our work session, discussed some minor edits, the city clerk has passed around a clean version of this, as well as the redline version was in our packets. Would anyone like to move the resolution adopting council rules of procedure?
Some move.
Councilmember Mail, a second.
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, second. Any other discussion or changes people would like to see this? No? All right, okay, yes.
Just a question, a resident asked me this question and I wasn't quite sure how to respond, so I just wanted to put it out to my colleagues. The email I received said, I read the agenda packet, what I'm interested in is what informed the changes. So, I mean, our council, the minutes of our council meetings would describe a little bit of the back and forth we had in the previous meeting about this issue. And I think Mayor Stewart, you at some point may have talked about this, is something coming up on an agenda as well, is that?
Yes, so I think our very first meeting, we discussed the, that we were going to have a work session on the council rules, that would have been our first official meeting, we discussed it. And then at the work session, we talked about how, as a council, we had talked about when we wanted to have our city council meetings, that we were moving them till Wednesday and having the start time be consistent at 7:30, and that there were a number of practices that had gone into place, but, and we've been doing them for a couple of years, but had not changed in the procedures and given that we are a new council, we thought this would be a good opportunity to actually make them official. So some of them had been practices that we just done.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes. Yes, we had moved, Councilmember Siemens, second. And that was unanimous. All right, moving along, now to our work session. Our first work session is a discussion of amendments to the noise ordinance, I'll turn it over to the city manager first.
You guys move so fast, I get to the right place. I think we've had a very long time of angst about noise ordinance and concern about noise issues in the city. How do we respond to them? Do we have the practice and ordinance in place to handle them correctly? The kinds of things that I've heard about as complaints, recurring loud parties or performances at a particular location, loud people outside of those locations, we've heard about work that involves noise such as leaf blowers, construction, barking dogs, trash collection too early in the morning. We've heard about generators that are too loud, I've heard about them not only during times of power outages, but also the monthly testing that gets done. Heard about people with loud music that comes from their residence on a regular basis. And the questions that we've had is how should the city respond to these complaints, what should the police do, what items should go to a noise control board if we had one seated? And so there have been many different kind of lengthy discussions about this and wondering what to do. We do have, the city attorney's office has prepared a list of proposed changes and we've got city attorney Linda Pearlman here, could you go through those items for us?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Councilmember Schultz, however, did a nice summary for his constituents, I almost might want to read that.
Thanks.
But basically, starting from the beginning of the ordinance, the proposed changes are in red, capital letters, the first is just a technical, there was a recodification of the state local government article, so we updated the reference, that's not really worth it. Second is the definition of leaf blower was clarified a bit to make sure that it didn't have to be an engine powered device, but it could be something with a vacuum. I took most of that from Montgomery County, by the way, the revised definition. The third change is in the noise disturbance. Frankly, when this ordinance was drafted, I never thought it needed a sound meter reading, but a lot of people apparently did, so this is a clarification that the noise disturbance does not require a decibel level reading.
I'm sorry, could you just explain why that's important?
Because the, you don't have to, essentially if the noise, regardless of decibel level, is annoying, unpleasant, loud, obnoxious or unusual for the time or place that it's produced or detrimental to health and safety, it can be cited as a violation without having a sound level meter.
So it makes the enforcement easier?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So barking chihuahua is just as bad as a larger dog, if it annoys you.
It might be, although you should allow a little bit of time for the dog to bark, but if a dog's out there in the yard barking for hours or a long period of time, certainly it might constitute a noise disturbance and there's a specific section on animals, which also doesn't require a sound level measurement. The next regulation was just clarifying the place where the county regulations, essentially the regulation number had changed. And the substantive change is in the nighttime level, changing it from 55 to 65 on DBA, A-level decibel reading, which...
Can you just check, which, if you like, can identify the section, page number and section?
It's page four, section 14.12.050A.
And what was the rationale behind the change?
I'm going to defer to Councilmember Schultz on that one.
Yeah, let me get to the, what page are we on?
Top of page four.
Top of page four. The change of the nighttime noise level.
Yeah, it's currently 55 dB A. The basic reason is, is that 55 decibels, by all the literature that I can find on this, the subject, the technical literature, is, amounts to what is equivalent to a conversation in somebody's living room, probably not even as loud as I'm talking right now. And what that means is, is that if it's dead quiet outside, there's no other ambient noise like cars driving by or people's air conditioners next door running, you may hear sitting in your living room, your bedroom, a conversation, a normal quiet conversation between two adults walking up the street. That would be the maximum amount of noise that would be permitted at about 55 decibels. So, think about that, if a car drives by or anything louder than that happens, then there's been a violation of the noise ordinance. And the problem with that is, is that we all know we live in an urban area, this is not rural Iowa, where the only thing you're going to hear is the rustle of the leaves and the trees or something. There's always noises. And so what it means is that at that level, it's just, the, it's a meaningless measure. And in order to be able to help the police department have some realistic chance of being able to enforce, we need to raise the level to where it has some meaning. And frankly, going up from 55 to 60 may not sound like much, but understand that on the scale that they use for, for sound measurement, going from 50 to 60 or from 60 to 70 or 10 decibels basically doubles the amount of sound, doubles the loudness. So actually 55 to 60 actually does make a difference, at 60, you're really talking about the level of a conversation that I'm having now. In other words, this is kind of the office conversation you would have, or the sound of a dishwasher running or something of that nature. And I, so it becomes, it becomes at that level something that you can actually hear and it's going to be something that's distinguishable. And so that's why we raised it, because as it is right now, the 55 dB A level is a useless number, we might as well have it down to zero for all the good it's going to do us, because that means there's virtually any sound that you hear is going to be a violation of the Tacoma Park noise ordinance at 55 decibels.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Yeah.
That's, as measured at what distance?
That would be measured from an adjoining property. It could be measured from the street in front of somebody's house or it could be measured from the middle of, from the next door neighbor's property.
So the 65 decibels would be you talking right here next to me, but it would be less if we were to measure from the back of the room or from the...
Sixty, sixty decibels, if I'm sitting here after this place is cleared out, you and I are just having a conversation and I don't sound like a dying frog, people over there should, well, except, this is a place that's designed to enhance.
Okay, but if we were outside on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
At three feet, it would be 60 decibels, but on the adjacent property?
You wouldn't probably be able to hear it.
Right, so it would have to be something louder than a conversation for it to be measured in 60 decibels from the joint property.
Yeah, that's the thing, I mean, all of these sounds are measured in the way they set this, at a certain distance, it's not like you're going to be sticking your ear right up against something, there's a distance that's usually involved in the equation.
I think that's the next item.
Let's let the city attorney walk through this and then I think, I might, I think the way we should do this this evening is after, you just kind of highlight the changes, if members of the council have any overall comments to make, and then I think the best way to do this tonight is go through section by section so we can, like, first talk about decibel levels and then other pieces of this, so if you want to continue.
Sure, I would point out that if you're close to the next receiving property, it might be, not very far distance, but if the ambient level, the background noise basically exceeds the 65 or 60 or 55 or whatever the standard is, then it's not a violation unless ambient noise level plus three decibels. And we changed in the measurement of sound section that rather than noise levels being measured at essentially the curb line, could be anywhere on the property hearing the noise, the receiving noise area, unless the ordinance specifically says, states a measurement. This 14.12.090 on animals was just a clarification, again, I never thought that required a sound level meter reading, but we want to make it absolutely clear that animal noise doesn't require a decibel level reading to be a noise disturbance. The section on 14.12.100, previously audible burglar alarms or car alarms were prohibited unless they could be ended within 30 minutes, which can be a long time, especially at night, so that, Councilmember Schultz's suggestion was reduced to 15 minutes. And hopefully the police will turn them off long before then. All right, there were just some sort of minor changes to if a waiver, the noise ordinance was requested, rather than being published in newspaper of general circulation, the Tacoma Park Newsletter could be the publication plus posting a notice of the hearing on the city's website, just updated. Enforcement and penalties were at 14.12.130. Currently, the violation of the noise ordinance is a class C violation, which has a fine of $200. If it's a repeat offense, eventually the second offense within one year period, the fine is doubled to $400. Beyond that, third and later violations within six months of a previous violation are class A municipal infractions, which have a $500 fine. Of course, warnings can be issued before you get to the citation phase. And in D of that section, we're at 14.12.130 enforcement and penalties still. It's clarified that a notice of violation is not required before a citation can be issued and a citation can be issued if the enforcement officer, currently that's the police, but it could also be a code enforcement officer, either determines that noise level exceeds the maximal noise level, that's the 55 or 60 decibels, or determines that a person has caused or permitted a noise disturbance, so the enforcement officer doesn't, can use the noise disturbance provisions. E is a new section, caused by various events that have occurred in the city within the past year or so. To clarify that if there's a noise disturbance or other violation of the ordinance created by sort of rental or use of premises for music, entertainment, a celebration or performance event, and doesn't have to be admission being charged, or by construction worker, commercial activity, then the enforcement officer, the police can now issue a citation to not only the people who are, person or people who are violating the ordinance, but also to the property owner or the person in charge who are responsible of supervision. We think that will help a lot, we hope that will help a lot, anyway. I just added in F, right under that, noise disturbance complaints, that this next section dealt with referral to the noise complaint board. And in addition, the new H, we're on page nine of 12, is providing for a new sort of event shutdown order, that any event or entertainment or activity that's causing a noise disturbance or creating noise that exceeds the decibel levels, then the enforcement officer can shut down the event, or if it's construction, issue a stop work order, or in order to cease the violation. And that also can be issued if there's a, essentially written complaint from at least two reliable witnesses, and I think it's reasonable for the enforcement officer to determine the reliability of witnesses. And anyone who receives such an event shutdown order or a stop work order must immediately cease the activity that constitutes the violation, comply with the instructions of the enforcement officer before they can resume the activity. And violation of such a shutdown order or a stop work order is a class A municipal infraction, that's a... infraction, that's for five hundred dollar fine. And if it's a rental of premises, or a performance event, the person who violates the noise control ordinance and/or the property owner or person responsible for management or supervision is supposed to abide by this event shutdown order. And if not, they can be charged with a class A violation, and essentially all told to go home, except perhaps the person who has to clean up the premises. And I think that was it for the proposed changes, plus any more you all decide to make.
Terrific. So I think our, as we said before, our goal for this evening is to walk through the changes and the noise ordinance, discuss the different sections, so that we can give direction to the city staff and the city attorney's office, and then this will come back to the council probably sometime in January. And again, it'll be a two-reading ordinance, so there'll be opportunities for the public to weigh in and to make changes, as well as we're going along. So first, as I said before, if there are any just overall general comments, and then we'll walk through each of the sections and talk about them individually. First, Councilmember Smith.
Ms. Purman, thank you very much. Councilmember Schultz, I appreciate your work on this. I've had plenty of constituents complaining about noise, and what do you do? Just telling the police to go to a site and try to figure out if it violates the current code has not been very helpful. So, I'm, I'm happy to see this rewrite. One of the questions that I have is, does this apply to Washington Adventist Hospital and Washington Adventist University, without it explicitly saying that it applies to nonprofit large institutions, or?
It should, it should apply.
Okay.
To anywhere in the city.
And my complaints have usually been regarding their HVAC systems. Is there anything that we need to put in there so that that is highlighted? If there's a complaint that, you know, it's not construction, it's, it's, it's not a leaf blower, it's on an entertainment type situation, does, do we need to say something about just the regular running of an HVAC unit?
No.
Okay.
One of the noise complaint, well, it didn't actually end up going to court because the owner made some corrective measures, but the IHOP on New Hampshire Avenue was cited for noise violation. And that case, she'd use a sound meter.
Okay. And then finally, I'd like, I'm glad that we have the noise board being part of this. But how would someone appeal a decision? Because they didn't see that in the new.
They, you mean, appeal, once there's been a noise.
Yes.
Control board violation?
Yes.
It would be under the circuit court rules for appeal of administrative agency decisions.
And do you think we should?
Like COLTA.
Yes, right, right. But do you think we should put that in here, or?
I'll, I'll look at it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I think it's in some, I think we have it in some rules. It may be something that we would hand out, it may be part of the application or their information that, that we would share with them at the time.
Oh, and, and one other thing, what about motion picture shoots? If there's a lot of noise going on, how would, and people start complaining, would there be a waiver? Would the initial waiver apply to that, or?
There, there could be a waiver. Certainly waivers have been gotten for things like graduation parties in the past.
We also have the, we also have the new ordinance about filming, you know, that says you have to get special approval if, if it is going to be something that's loud, so we'd have a way to, to judge it, and if that was not living up to that, we have a way to stop it from that as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Couple things I want to speak, address in general about noise control ordinances. What I find is, is that, I think is probably true, is that in most municipalities that have these things, that they're probably one of the ordinances that's least enforced by whatever enforcing authority there is. I don't know, I can't prove any of that to be true, but, but when you think about it, it pretty much stands to reason that, from the standpoint of the police department, which is tasked with enforcing this basically task, although technically speaking, this ordinance charges a code enforcement officer with the authority to also enforce it. Comes down to the police being able to, to do this. And when those calls come into the dispatch office, unless it's a very calm kind of a situation, it's more than likely that, that the police have more important things in terms of the, the rank order of seriousness that they need to tend to. And when they do tend to them, what they finally, what I've noticed that the police do, which is pretty, when you think about it, sensible, is they go to the property where the noise is being generated, say you suggest it's a party, graduation party, bunch of kids having a great time, music coming out. They go to it, they tell them, look, please calm down, move it indoors, it's past ten PM, you've got to get inside, close the windows, and you can make all the noise you want to make. And, or a neighbor will do the same thing, and that'll solve the problem. The, the, the problem that we want to try to address here aren't these one-off kinds of incidences that may aggravate the heck out of us on a particular occasion. It's the ones that persist, where you have a, a property owner who has absolutely no regard, and I have these property owners in my neighborhood, that want to play music, they want to play it outside, or they want to have the windows open in the summertime. And neighbors have talked to them, and they've told me that they've talked to them, and the people just become intimidated. And, and, and it becomes worrisome, and, and creates a lot of anxiety, because people feel like they just don't know what to do. And if they say, well, I've called the police, they come, they talk to the people, the people shut it down for a few minutes, as soon as the police leave, turn the volume back up. And so it's almost a situation where homeowners can feel desperate, because they just don't know what to do. Those are the kinds of problems that I want this noise ordinance to, to try to address. And I'm very pleased with the changes that we've been able to adopt, because I think this strengthens it a lot. And one of the key elements of being able to do that is to make, make the ordinance something that, from the police department's point of view, that it makes it reasonable for them to try to enforce it, so that they're not being called to, to do something on just every little minor thing. I mean, they will attend to all of those things if they can get to them. But the reality is, is like in the summertime, when everybody's outside on long summer evenings, these things are going to happen. And I think the other aspect of it is, is to realize is that we all chose to live in an urban area, and there's always going to be noise, just like there's always going to be ambient light coming in our windows at night. If we don't, if you want to have total darkness, live in Columbia, Maryland, or something like that, where they don't have streetlights or something. But I remember when I first moved there from having lived in South Baltimore for, for, for many years, I, I couldn't get over how dark it was outside, and I thought, there must be something wrong, there's no lights coming in. And I didn't like living in Columbia, Maryland, because it was just too dark. It was too quiet, so I guess I'm just an urban boy. But the, these are the things that I think, getting back to what we're, the subject here, is that we, we need to focus on reality, and, and to try to make, make, to, to address the, the problems that my residents are telling them, that are driving them freaking crazy. We have the individuals, and, and some of it is, is that there's, there's like a family in my neighborhood, their culture, they're, they're from an African country, and their home becomes sort of like Grand Central Station for all the members of their community, and about twice a month, they want to have parties, which is great for them, but at, at certain times of the day, it just, on certain occasions, it gets out of hand. And so these are the kind of situations where we can, we, we can resolve, or we have like the, the church on New Hampshire Avenue, that has defied numerous police visits, and, and opens the windows of the church, and lets the music rock and roll, they run out space to whomever they want to, up to two to three, four hundred people. People can drink, the church makes a lot of rental income, and apparently doesn't much care, whatever the residents think. And I've had people crying, because they cannot, and even the police have done everything they've can, they even are, conducted some arrests in occasions. And we, we also know about some of the situations that happened this past year on Westmoreland, haven't it? So I'll stop at this point.
Thank you. Great. Councilmember Siemens, do you have a general comment before we dig in?
Yeah, I just seem to be related to our previous discussion here, and I wanted to see if we needed a, an explicit exemption of the, for the helicopters to go into the Washington Adventist Hospital?
Well, I'll, I'll look at that. We certainly exempt city activities and trash collection by the city, and I think there's an exemption for ambulances.
We can add to the list.
Right.
Yeah. It might fall in the exemption for emergency operations by fire and rescue, police agencies or public utilities, maybe it could fall within there. I assume you want to, I assume you want to exempt them.
Yeah, and I, and I think it benefits us to be explicit about it, so that there's not a question in, in the future.
Councilmember Ma'am?
Thank you. I would just, just wanted to say quickly that I support us taking action on this issue. Thank you, Councilmember Schultz, for taking the lead on this. And I would just urge us that we can make changes, and if it doesn't work out in six months, we can try to make other adjustments. Thank you.
Councilmember Kreschke?
I, and thank you, ma'am, for your presentation tonight. I would just ask, it seems like you referenced the county, the county ordinance, or whatever the relevant term is. It would be interesting just to see if you have it at your fingertips, if you could email the council, what the county ordinance looks like, and other related municipalities, and what their ordinances look like on this particular issue as a, for, for sake of comparison.
I'd be happy to email you the county ordinance, or show it to you right now.
Okay.
As far as other municipalities, that could be anywhere and everywhere. We, we, by the way, did take the, originally take the noise control board from College Park, but I know back in two thousand, when we first were considering this, I looked at some across the country. If you, if you want to tell me a specific place.
Okay.
That might be easier than.
I will follow up with you on that, but I think just starting with the county would be helpful. And I guess one thing that I would note before we drill down and get to the more specific things, I think we can change this ordinance as much as we want, at least the, and this is to you, Councilmember Schultz, thank you very much for doing this, but I think if we're not going to enforce it, then there's no, you know, this is just a piece of paper. And I think that that seems to be the overarching theme coming from the community. But I will note also, as somebody who works with police officers on a daily basis, I also wonder, and this is sort of why I ask you this question, is if the police is the most perfectly situated institution to handle these types of issues? Because I, I'm sure the chief is here, I'm sure his officers are dealing with a lot more pressing issues, and unfortunately, and should take priority over somebody's concern about noise. So if there is some guidance out there, and I asked the city staff and the city attorney with respect to other unique ways in which we can enforce by utilizing either the NCB or some variation of that, I'd be interested to see that.
Certainly, I think originally code enforcement was going to enforce this, and they did, but they're only working from nine to five, their, their regular business hours, and a lot of these incidents occur outside of normal business hours. There was, and maybe still is, a police community services officer who was charged with responsibility for the noise ordinance. I'm not sure what happened to that position.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to go into that exactly, but I think that while there may be a more pressing police item at a particular time, noise issues are part of the livability of the community and have to be taken fairly seriously. I think this ordinance gives two options. One is for a city staff person, and it has a variety of, it could be a police officer, code enforcement officer, as well as the option to bring it to the noise control board. So I think there's a couple noise complaint boards. So I think there's several different options about that. I think there's a determination to enforce this, and I think there's an interest to having an ordinance that we can use to easily do that.
Well, most of it, assuming you reconstitute the noise control board, that would usually be citizen complaints, often against neighbors, two-party complaints.
Councilmember Schultz, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to do, and I have read, believe it or not, the Montgomery County ordinance on, on, on it, and I'm not trying to deflect your request, I'll just, will say that it's very long, it's, and one of the reasons it's long and a lot more complicated than ours is that it has to deal with a whole array of kind of land uses that we don't have, and population situations that we don't have in the city. And it goes into a lot of technology and stuff that's way over most people's heads. I liked our, our ordinance simply because it seems to focus on what it is we need to deal with here in the city. The other comment that I'd like to make, if, if, if I don't take up too much of the city council's time here, is that the, the noise, one of the frustrations, of course, is, is that what happens if you call the police and, and you don't get the response that you think you want? Well, the noise control board section in this ordinance, which is not being changed at all in this, in this amendment, is a secondary, an alternative means by which people who are wanting to file a complaint can do so. It doesn't necessarily have to be filed just at the time of the incident. It can be filed the next day, or within the next thirty days. You have thirty days to file that complaint. Am I not right, or is it ten days? Maybe it's ten days.
I was thinking it was ten, but.
Okay, I'll accept ten. To file the, file the complaint, it's the, and it's patterned after what they do in Montgomery County. It occurred to me when I read, well, why does it require two people to file together on this complaint? And then the thought occurred, well, what do you do in the situation where you have a chronic, a person who's a chronic complainer, who's just trying to get even with a neighbor, and is constantly filing complaints? At least this obviates that kind of a situation, on the presumption that it's two different, two people from different addresses, that it's more likely to be a legitimate complaint than something that is just somebody who's a difficult person to get along with. And so that'll, and that, that sets up a process, like we have with the, the COLTA process, and also with the tree commission, similarly, somewhat of an administrative adjudicatory process by which something can take the time, and people can, residents can at least feel like they have an avenue of recourse. And that's why I think the noise control board needs to be reconstituted.
Councilmember Kova?
Yes, thanks. This, I think, sort of spins off a little bit what Councilmember Kreschke said. We, in the proposal as it stands now, we're creating some additional types of situations, or designating them when enforcement can occur, but I guess I'm just not seeing how we would actually enforce more, other than by just saying we want to. So I think the additional circumstance that Councilmember Schultz added, where there's a late party, or whatever it is, and it can be shut down, and so, it's great to have that, but it sounds like, you know, the noise control board kind of fell away, so if we just say, well, now we're going to make sure they work. Apparently, they never met, they never had any complaints, and I don't personally feel that comfortable with the citizens group. in effect levying fines. That's a separate question, we can talk about when it gets to that. But I guess I like the idea of having better enforcement. I'm just not sure, other than creating new categories, this will actually get there.
I think there's a couple things. One is not requiring the decibel meter. Sometimes we've had situations where the police say, you know, we don't have somebody trained with this, we don't have one handy, we don't have one with that police officer when they respond. This allows them to go ahead and take action that they didn't before. I think that having the situation about the recurring events is a particularly strong new step and, and some stronger fines.
I think it makes sense to have the chief come up and comment on this.
Why don't, Chief, would you like to come up and comment for a moment? And I do believe, having talked to Captain Collington after he met with some of the residents on West Moreland over the summer, that the officers have been retrained and on this, on the noise ordinance and that he's talked to a number of them already.
Yeah, and one of the difficulties with just, just the equipment for the sound meter, the, it has to be calibrated and certified every so often, and ours are so old that the company can't do it anymore. We have to buy all new ones. I'll give you a little background. Obviously, I've worked for the county for thirty-one years. I can tell you right now, I've only written maybe in the thirty-one years, two or three noise ordinance violations myself, because as, as been pointed out here, it's a very low priority. We try to get compliance from the people that are residents as well. You know, in the obvious cases where they're going to ignore the police and we have to come back several times, then it gives us some teeth. I, the county changed the county code, I think almost forty years ago, to, to not require the police to use sound meters for enforcement. It was creating a noise disturbance across a residential line, usually with electronic amplifier equipment, things like that. In the past, they also had to use noise, noise meters prior to that time. One of the other issues is the county also has a similar policy that code enforcement does the enforcement during the day. Mostly the construction companies, the, the commercial establishments that work during the day, and the police department is secondary and then takes over in the evenings and at night. And again, it, those calls are going to go on, on a status of priority, especially in a county as big as Montgomery County. You can imagine, you're not going to get the highest priority. We, we believe that taking the requirement or the perceived requirement and clarifying that no noise meter has to be used is going to be helpful to us. The, the fact that right now, if somebody wants to, I can just keep writing tickets to somebody all night long about a noise disturbance that they're creating, but I can't shut the, the source of the party down under the current existing law. I don't know that there's, and we, we ran into that problem with the county by, you know, we, you know, the officers doing the best they could under the worst circumstances, trying to get from call to call, want to shut a party down. And, you know, they shut it down, but technically, do they even have the authority to do so? You know, if it's constitutionally protected behavior, it, somebody can, they have a right to assemble. So unless there's something in the code that permits it under certain circumstances, then there really was no way of doing that. So I think that clarification in our code will also help us. And again, the noise control board actually did exist. It was well before my time, but I know one of the people that are affected greatly by the, the church that you were talking about was one of the original noise control board members. And we've had, you know, numerous meetings with the, the management of that church, with the pastor, you know, numerous promises by that organization to have people there to monitor the crowd. I don't know that we've had a huge issue this summer. It seems like it's died down, but I, I went back and looked at Chief Recucci's notes for the same exact meetings from six, seven years ago. So I think reinstituting the, the noise control board and adding these, these provisions where the person that is either the property owner or the property manager has some culpability in, in this, in, in running these events or at least in keeping the lid on these events, then I think that that will help us as well.
Thank you, Chief. All right. If we want to now look at the ordinance and walk through it, if any, I think the definitions or if anybody has anything before line seventy-eight?
I just asked.
Section four?
Yeah. The, I mentioned this in email beforehand, but at the very bottom of page two, seventy-one through seventy-four, unpleasant, annoying, offensive, loud or obnoxious, and then, or unusual for the time of day or location where it's produced or heard. I gather that came from the, the county definition, but, so it could be unusual for the time of day or location where it's produced or heard, but it doesn't have to also be unpleasant, annoying, offensive, loud or obnoxious. So I'm just wondering if that means just any unusual noise would be, and this may be a small or an iffy thing, but because it's connected by ors instead of ands, number two could be the sole reason that somebody could have committed a noise disturbance. Is that, it probably wouldn't ever happen, but that's sort of what it says, right?
Yeah, I think you didn't want to require all three for every noise disturbance.
Right, but I think two, two only makes sense when it's combined with one or three, I guess is what I'm saying.
I guess piggybacking on that, but should there be an or after number one?
Well, that's the assumption, is that there's an or.
Right.
I think you need an or for one to work, but I appreciate your comment that it, that two seems a little bit awkward, just doesn't stand alone.
Two applies to either one or three, but not by itself, I guess is what I would say. Just, it's a small thing, but.
I think we can look at that.
Yeah. How do you want it? Do you want essentially, it could be unpleasant, annoying, offensive, loud or obnoxious and detrimental to the health and so forth in number three, but number two should go with either one or three?
I'm not sure that number two is needed.
Yeah.
If the noise is, is simply unusual, but it's not any of the things in one or any of the things in three, I don't know why it would matter that we need to enforce it.
Right, if it's unusual at a certain time of day, then it's unpleasant.
Right.
You know, presumably.
I mean, my neighbor is singing Sound of Music soundtrack at any time of the day. You know, if it's not bothering me, it's not bothering me.
There might be some things in certain times. Okay, I'll look at that.
You could just put that supplement in parentheses as indicating it's part of what we're not constitute unpleasant, et cetera.
All right.
But I'll let the attorney.
Everyone okay with that? All right.
With a solution.
With a solution, yes.
I think, yeah, probably eliminating two, but I'll look at it.
Okay. Great. If we move on to section four, which is line seventy-eight to ninety-five, this is a sound level meter measurement is not required to establish a noise disturbance? Any changes there or comments, questions? All right. Moving on to the next section on regulations, line ninety-six through one eighteen. I think we probably have things here we want to talk about. Councilmember Mayo?
I would just say that I support the change in the decibel level that was proposed. And I, I, while we were talking, I downloaded a decibel meter and it did indeed listen to Councilmember Schultz. And he repeatedly went up to eighty decibels despite his ailment and quiet condition. So, so I think that the number that is proposed in the revision is really, is quite reasonable. And I assume that at the end of the day, a lot of it, as the chief has said, is about the department working with someone and cases where we really have problems, such as the, the establishment in Ward Six, it's off the charts. It's not even getting close to fifty or sixty or seventy.
If we want to stick on that for a second, do other people want to say whether or not they support or oppose changing the decibel levels up to sixty? Councilmember Siemens supports. Councilmember Schultz, I'm assuming you support. Councilmember Cressi?
I'm, I think I support it as well. I just have a comment in regards to what Councilmember Mayo just said. I actually also, I know that we're going to talk about this later, but the measurement of sound, I think Councilmember Schultz said is based on adjoining property. I also downloaded an app while I was sitting here to measure the, the decibel level of the adjoining councilman. And, and he did go close to eighty. And so that, you know, provides, and it actually, the, the app tells you that Councilmember Schultz spoke in a, in a volume that was the average quiet street or the average normal conversation. So that at least informs me a bit. I think I have some clarification on the issue of how we compare to the county, because I think some folks have a concern with us being above the county level. But, you know, a county, the county is a much larger area, which covers various different demographics and areas. So I think that that's worth noting. And finally, with respect to what we've already talked about, which is the, we might have gone past this, which is the sound level meter measurement based on what the chief has testified to today. I think if it allows, and again, I think this is an issue of enforcement, not, we can, we can lower this decibel level down to twenty. And I think if we have well-intentioned people who are behind enforcing it and that law enforcement, enforcement officers have the tools to do it, I'm fully supportive of it. And that's sort of where I'll leave it.
It's interesting, I see on the chart here that eighty decibels is equivalent to a telephone dial tone. I'm just saying.
Actually, maybe, maybe you all need to measure the ambient level too, but Montgomery County's levels, they divide their noise areas into non-residential and residential. Non-residential daytime is sixty-seven and residential noise, residential noise areas at daytime is sixty-five. Nighttime, non-residential is sixty-two and residential is fifty-five.
And the chief did want to mention that they don't actually have decibel meters, so they're not out measuring in the county. They, they are going more by complaint. So you got through some?
Yes. I didn't hear from Councilmember Smith or Kovar if you have opinions on the decibel level.
Did you?
Oh, it's fine.
Sixty's fine.
I guess my question is, so if, if Fred is talking at eighty and then the ambient noise that's happening in the neighborhood is fifty, how does that all factor in? I mean, is it just the one noise or is there a cumulative impact in the neighborhood and then a car goes by and it's already fifty and that car is fifty, but does that mean it's now a hundred? Or is, I don't think I personally know enough about decibels to know the answer to that.
It's all science.
That's why they don't do it.
I think that's why it's best that having these numbers in, in the ordinance, perhaps somewhat of a, they're, they are there because we need to have them there, but in reality, the officers who are doing the enforcing are going to be using their judgment because the people who are calling for relief from the disturbance are also using their judgment as to something that is too loud. It's two o'clock in the morning and I can't sleep because so-and-so down the block and so forth and so on. And nobody's going to be talking about DVAs at two o'clock in the morning.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I mean, one of the reasons that this came up years ago, several years ago, was leaf blowers. And we heard people talking about that tonight at the podium. I understand the problem with parties and, and, you know, special events, but does this give the police or the code enforcement the tools they need to be clear about leaf blowers? And what level of, of noise from a leaf blower is acceptable or not acceptable?
And actually, I had a similar question, because if we're dealing with contractors or utility, other entities, and we're not just talking about people, residents, neighbors being noisy, but we're interacting, I would imagine that having this set would be helpful when we might have to deal with the construction or other things.
It is. I will say though, that, that there's going to be cases when, you know, we're going to have to give a waiver to a construction that happens over a period of time. Victory Tower was one of those situations and, you know, I'm very familiar, it was really loud. But sometimes certain work has to be done. And so it, it gives us a, a discussion point with the property owners and the contractors, but there's also going to have to be some back and forth on it.
About the leaf blowers?
With leaf blowers, I think we can handle that. I mean, I.
Generally, the police department's not going to get calls for leaf blowers. We, we almost never do. I think in the code that, that exists, that the leaf blowers sold in the city have to be rated at seventy dB or less, but of course, no manufacturer rates their leaf blowers. So, you know, I think Councilmember Schultz actually did a little homework and went over to Ace or one of the, one of the stores to see if they knew what the DB output, you know, was on their, on their leaf blowers. We don't get a lot of complaints of that, mostly because during the day, people aren't home, they're at work. We just don't get it. And if, if it's a repeat problem, then code enforcement would usually get involved during the day. If it's just a one-time thing, you know, we'll go out and we'll check on it. But again, we're not going to have decibel meters out there at night. People aren't leaf blowing at night. It's not a huge issue for us. Okay. This is, this was a major topic of discussion when the noise ordinance was before, as before.
That's right. I remember.
And there were, maybe not, nobody complained, but they did in here. Well, yeah, if a tree falls in the, in the forest, but, but I, I guess what it really comes down to with the leaf blowers, most of the more modern ones, I mean, obviously are not as loud. The backpack ones and things like that, they're not quite as loud. And again, it's, it's seventy decibels, but where's that measured to? I mean, the, the sound meters that everybody's using, the app, obviously isn't, isn't certified. It's not, it's not necessarily that accurate, but you're standing next to each other. There's ambient noise in the room. You know, it's at twenty or thirty yards away, it may not be anywhere near that. So again, it's a per complaint basis. You know, we, we don't have noise meters in every police car and, and frankly, we have other things to do besides be the, the, the primary on leaf blowers and things like that. I think the real public, the real quality of life issues that, that we deal with in the police department are the parties, are the, the repeat noise complaints that we get at certain establishments or certain homes. And that's where we really focus our time. I think code enforcement generally focuses more on the construction and the ongoing type things. And I, again, I can't stress enough, having a civilian administrative board, the noise control board, I think is a very important portion of this because, again, you know, one neighbor, you know, what's, what's annoying to one neighbor, maybe, I may love the Sound of Music and Councilman Mayo may hate, you know, the Sound of Music, or if it's Julie Andrews singing, I can deal with it, but if it's his neighbor, I can't. You know, there's, there's going to be some subjectivity in what is annoying to one person and what is annoying to the other. And the officer's going to be tasked with making the best judgment they can on the scene. In those cases where it's neighbor versus neighbor, I think it's important to get at least two complainants and, and that's one way to resolve it without having to have people go to court.
Just one, one last point on this is that having this discussion with the council gives us also an excuse to put more information in the newsletter and to, and to get people to remind themselves that they need to be good neighbors. And so part of that is helpful, just identifying these standards.
Great. All right. So I think on this section, what I'm hearing, and I think at, at this point, I'm also in favor of moving to the sixty decibels, is that even, and again, we will come back to this, but at the moment, it looks like we're, a majority of the council is comfortable moving in this direction and we can revisit it next time we take this up. Councilmember Cressi, did you have something?
Yeah, Mayor Story, I have a very quick question. Since we have the chief here, I live very close to the VFW. I love their concerts. I, you know, I have to sometimes get a temporary waiver when I walk into a room. I'm usually the source of the noise, but I think there's other people, there's folks in my neighborhood that are more sensitive to the sound. And so my question for you is, and I think members of the public who are listening in, I think they would benefit from it, what are your officers trained to do when they respond to a repeat offender? I know now this code will potentially give you the opportunity to shut down an event, but now, in, in the current system that we're in with no noise control board and the inability to do that, what is, because I think a lot of this goes to community relations.
Well, it, basically, that's, that's exactly right. It's, it's basically talking to the people, you know, trying to remind them that they have neighbors, that they're creating a disturbance, they can be cited. You know, there's always that threat. Generally, we get compliance and, and believe it or not, you know, as, even though we had a, a couple of occasions this summer where there were some noise complaints from that, that particular establishment, you know, if, if you're only getting two or three in the summer with everybody with their windows down, where with their windows down, where they're doing stuff every weekend, that's actually pretty good. But the officers use their best judgment, you know, what's reasonable to them. And again, it's just like somebody that commits a traffic violation. Not everybody gets a ticket. Some people get warnings. You know, it really depends on attitude, you know, of the offender at times. If the person, you know, flips their nose at the officer and turns the music back up, well, the next one's probably not going to be a warning. This just makes it a little bit easier for us to enforce it without having to pull a sound meter out and happen to capture the sound, you know, because if they see the police car coming, they're going to shut it down. I think that's the big thing. And there is one other item, Councilmember Smith brought up the college. Well, the college presents some unique properties in that one building, the county line goes right, the city line goes right through the building, and of course, the field is in the county. And if the noise disturbance is being created on the county field, do we have the authority to enforce it in the city? And I, you know, my answer at this point is no. And I'll let our city attorney look into that, but we've had similar situations with the Adventist School, with Tacoma Academy, with the field that backs up to a couple of houses that are in the city. So those are the issues because we are so close to the other jurisdictions, people have to understand that, yeah, okay, fine, but if the noise isn't coming from inside the city and there's only so much that we can do about that.
Okay, Chief. Okay. Then moving on, we are now at line 119. We go down from 119 to say 127. Noise level and noise disturbance standards for construction. Are there any comments, questions, changes?
I have, it doesn't really say what they are. We just incorporate the county code, so I thought I'd tell you what they said, more or less. Maximum allowable noise levels for construction cannot exceed from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekdays. It's 75 decibels. If there is a noise suppression plan, which has to have the neighbors notified and approved by the County Department of Environmental Protection, it can go up to 85. And at other times, other than 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekdays, it's the level specified in the ordinance. Construction noise levels are to be measured at least 50 feet from the source on the receiving property where the noise is heard. There are some regulations, but the prohibitive, provisions on noise disturbance do apply to construction noise. I think that's, I repeated that in our ordinance. But the default, as far as using a sound level meter during the day on weekdays, is 75.
And are there times for weekend construction?
No.
Councilmember Mayo?
I think that would have to be covered by some special permit or noise suppression plan.
This is more of a comment in general, which is that sometimes in our ordinances, there's a section, it's almost a preference or a statement of policy. And it seems to me we have sort of two situations we're dealing with. One, which is that we're trying to provide routine guidance to people on how to be polite and respectful and good neighbors, and we don't really expect a lot of enforcement of this volume conversation. And the other is situations which just continue to escalate and where there's clearly going to be a lot of work and a lot of difficulty for neighbors. And I just wonder if potentially there's some way to describe that in a policy statement that says, you know, while the majority of this code, this section of code is designed to just provide, you know, guidance, it's the intent of council that, you know, the response will be on a complaint basis, but that the city staff, police department would really use, you know, their full authority to try to resolve what are repeated problematic situations. So maybe there's some way to describe that narratively that would serve as a guide for allocation of labor and effort in the future and making people feel like they have recourse and they have, they can expect a level of service and responsiveness.
I think we'll go into the declaration of policy, maybe some changes there.
There's some whereas clauses.
Yeah.
I didn't draft anywhere else clauses yet.
I was thinking that the reason I was suggesting the declaration of policy is because that sticks around, you know, you read that when you go to the code and the whereas clauses are, I don't know where those go.
That's helpful, thank you.
Great. So was you? Okay. All right. Any, moving on, now we're at line 128. There aren't many changes. If we go down to line 128 to 178. So this covers leaf blowers, animals, burglar and vehicle alarms. Any changes, questions, comments on this section, these sections?
Yeah. Councilmember Kovar?
Just one question on the animals. You know, it could be very small amount, but it was in the middle of the night, it would be bad, so I don't know whether that's persistent or habitual or continuous. Because it, honestly, I mean, it could just be, it wouldn't have to be every night, but if just a couple of times a week, the dog barked at 2:00 in the morning, that would be bad. So I don't know, maybe that.
That might be habitually. That might be an interesting question definition.
Maybe it happened once, I think most of us would say, fine, that was just the dog barking, but.
I think that would hopefully be handled by the noise control board if a noise disturbance complaint was filed. It seems like the type of thing that we don't want the police out there to.
Yeah. Let me just add, thinking of a case in my neighborhood where the couple had a new pet and they both apparently, I guess, left the house during the day, but the pet in the backyard and the animal just barked. May not have been very loud, but what it does is that it's, it's more than just the noise for people. I mean, it's a question of, is this animal suffering? And it becomes sort of an emotional distraction. So I think that it's, it's good to have this in here such that the sound level itself is not, is not necessarily the determinant.
And of course, this supplements the whole animal control law, so if you think the, or have evidence that the pet doesn't have water or food or is being improperly restrained, as you call animal control.
So this language at least gives somebody in this city, maybe a code enforcement officer, the right to go by and just say, you need to do something about this.
Okay. We're now at line 179, exemptions. We go exemptions and waivers, so it takes us to line 239. Any questions, comments on exemptions and waivers?
Does that supersede complaints then? If somebody calls in, complains about the noise and there's a waiver?
Are we back at animals or?
No waivers.
No, no, waivers. So if someone has a waiver and someone calls in with a complaint, then the dispatcher can just tell them they've got a waiver for that?
Yeah, we can tell them there's a waiver for that.
And I guess I have a question. Line 183B, where it says leaf collection activities by the city, does the city utilize leaf blowers? Or it's leaf collection activities?
Well, they got the leaf vacuums. We don't do that now. I mean, we have the, we have the, we have the equipment.
I've seen the vacuums.
The vacuum.
Right, we have the vacuum on the trucks, but we don't have leaf blowers.
Okay.
That we've used.
But the vacuum's noisy.
Particularly when it gets a cat caught in it or something.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, I guess the only other thing I would say about the early morning trash pickup issue, you know, it, when you're kind of at an intersection and, you know, three different trucks come through at, you know, 6:30, 6:40 and 6:50, because it's picking up first the trash and then the recycling and then the other thing. That really is a pretty irritating thing. And I don't know if it's just we exempt that because it's a city and that's the way it goes, but, or is there any way to address that? I assume there isn't because they have to pick up what they have to pick up, right? And the buses get thrown into that too. So we typically have four things spread out over about 35 minutes.
I'm happy to talk to you about a particular incident because there may be a situation that we can handle some, a particular location a little differently, but yes, we have to pick up the trash. I mean, just have to do that.
Zero trash community.
That's right. We can, if you didn't put any trash out, we wouldn't come by.
No children, that way we get rid of the buses.
Okay. Moving on. All right. I'm now on line 240. So if you want me to, I'm going too quickly, you want me to stop, tell me, but I'm on enforcement and penalties. So if we look at enforcement and penalties, go up to line 317. That all deals with enforcement and penalties.
Just one quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
252, compliance plan. Who creates a compliance plan? Is that the enforcement officer? Is that the noise control board? Page 7.
Well, I mean, I think under B4, I don't think it's ever happened, to be honest, but B4 provides that the enforcement officer can require a compliance plan and then it would be the violator who submits it.
All right. Thanks.
So is that a situation where despite the fines, the entity or the person keeps doing it? Is that when you would get that?
It might be an ongoing activity. Yeah.
Would it help to have it defined in the definition section of the ordinance to define what a compliance plan constitutes or what it is, I guess?
That was going to be my suggestion as well. On that same note, would, could the compliance plan allow the enforcement officer and the parties that create it to include more stringent penalties for the violator in the event that they violate outside the ambit of this ordinance? Is that within their authority or compliance specifically pertains to their activity and not any future penalty that they may face?
Well, I think it could certainly provide that if within some certain period of time they're not in compliance, they agree, then there will be a fine of X dollars or they'll stop the activity or they'll move it outside, somewhere else. Whether, I don't think it could have fines in excess of what we've set forth here, but it certainly could provide, I think automatically that, let's say, if it's violated or it's not done within whatever the time period is, that there would be a fine for the person or something.
And I would just finally say with respect to that, and I know you said you may create a definition for what a compliance plan is, I think, at least I think it's a good idea that if the enforcement officer is the one who's creating that compliance plan, that they not only obviously get feedback from the violator, but also those who are complaining about the noise in creation of any potential compliance plan for long-term sort of noise or issues that may arise. And I don't think it should be required, but that he or she is not prohibited from getting feedback from those who are complaining.
Anything else on this section? I did want to raise something. I actually wanted to have a conversation about the two-party noise disturbance complaint on page eight. I'm on line 283. And I know a number of people have said that they favor the two-party. I'd actually want to entertain changing that to one-party. I think there are situations with neighbors that because of close proximity, it may be one neighbor having an issue with another neighbor, and so I wanted to put that out there and see how other people felt about changing that from a two-party notice to one-party.
A possible compromise could also be that it could be two people from the same address.
Okay.
But whatever.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I guess I'm just, would be concerned about it just becoming two people filing complaints against each other, sort of just because they have a personality clash.
But then why didn't it go to the noise control board?
Yeah, ultimately, it's going to go to the noise control board. It's just a question of protecting the noise control board from petty complaints that don't have really any material substance.
I'm okay with just one person doing it.
So I would prefer to stick with two because it shouldn't be too difficult to find a second adult to confirm that there is an issue going on.
I just think sometimes the way houses are situated, it might be something between just two neighbors, something like, like we were talking about before, animals or other things or.
I mean, because the end result of a complaint being made, or noise disturbance complaint here, is not that if you make a complaint, you are facing some kind of penalty, there is going to be a board, hopefully, as part of this ordinance, that will flush out whether these are credible and legitimate sort of complaints. I have no problem keeping, doing one-party.
I'd rather stick with two.
All right, two. So I have, how about, raise your hand if you'd rather stick with two for the time being. It's one, two, three, four. Think about one, we have three. Okay. For those who said two, would you entertain changing it to two people from the same house, from the same address? Raise your hand. Because right now, no? Okay. We will keep it at two for the time being. All right.
Actually, the couple that had been filed, we did take one or two to court early on. Frankly, it was a person who invited some friends of hers over and said, do you hear this?
Okay. All right. All right, moving on. I think I am now at the noise control board, line 318, and we'll just do that all the way to the end. Anything on noise control board?
I would like to just raise the point that sometimes it's called the noise complaint board and sometimes the noise control board. And so I think we tend to call it noise control board, but I've seen it referred to as complaint. So is it okay if we just stick it with control since people seem to prefer that?
Noise board.
Or the noise board.
Well, then you can put NCB.
Yeah, either way is NCB.
I think officially, it's always been the noise control board, but I'm sure people have.
I guess my question with respect to this is, it says that it's established to assist and advise the city. Would the board be established in the same manner that we have people join committees for the city?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Pearlman, on line 350, email delivery is not actually part of the list. Do we need to add that?
Well, we can certainly add that. It's not accepted for court service or process, but I don't think we have to follow that here. Maybe two of the, two of the methods.
Yeah, Councilmember Kovar?
I mentioned earlier the question of whether there's any other boards or committees that actually levy fines, and I think the answer electronically beforehand was maybe not.
I can't think of any.
And that part gives me a little.
I'm not sure how they'd be forced to fine anyway, to be honest.
Discomfort, but also I could imagine, you know, it's a bunch of neighbors, maybe they don't want to actually make a finding, yes, but do you want to actually be kind of getting your neighbor to have to pay something? So I don't know if there's another way to get to the fine based on the finding by then. I don't know what happens with COLTA, for example, if there's a violation, does.
There's a fine set through COLTA.
No, not necessarily. There's more like they must return the security deposit or whatever.
Oh, okay.
There's monetary consequence to COLTA's decisions.
Yes, but not.
But that's the funds that were sort of at stake, whereas in this case, that's not, right?
Well, you can.
Well, you can say that someone has to pay more than actually what is owed.
In COLTA?
In COLTA, yes. So it depends on how egregious the situation is.
And did... But I also heard that this entity, when it existed, never had any fines, right? So...
I don't think they ever had a hearing.
Never got to a hearing, no.
What about the tree commission?
They don't levy fines, I don't believe.
Well, so the question is, should there be a monetary consequence or not? Or is it just sufficient that somebody would be called to testi... You know, that a person be called to testify or come to a board hearing in order to defend themselves? Or somebody has a chance to articulate a complaint? And is that process sufficient to bring compliance, to get somebody to stop?
I think you need the fine.
I mean, I...
There isn't any to you.
Yeah, that's my thinking, but I'm wondering what everybody else kind of...
And I think the language right now says on line 388, "may order the violator." So it's up to the discretion of the board and what they think should be the resolution moving forward. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Schultz.
Basically, the whole point of filing a complaint is the person is aggrieved to such an extent that they actually will go through the process. That means they have a fairly high level of grievance, of wanting to get something to stop. And if you force somebody to go through a lot of paperwork or time, and then there's no real consequence to the person who's found in violation, why would somebody wanna go through the process in the first place? So I think there needs to be some sort of... But I understand what Councilmember Kovar is saying is, does the board itself issue the Class C violation, municipal infraction? Or is it delegated to a code enforcement officer, let's say?
Well, they can't issue a citation, but they could issue a civil fine. And then if it wasn't paid, then I guess a ticket citation could be issued. Awful lot of trouble to collect.
Councilmember Mail?
Assuming that we can confirm, and I assume this is true, that Maryland state law just allows municipalities to give the power to set fines to bodies like this? In other words, if we can do this under state law or whatever other governing body there would be, then I think I'm fine with it. Another alternative is to have the body be a body that makes a finding of fact, so reaches the conclusion that there has been a violation, and then have staff do it. And I'm fine with that, too. But I think it's written. I'm okay with it, assuming it's not a violation of our powers.
No, you can do it. You probably can't make it a lien against the property, but...
Any other comments on the noise?
Just one last question. So if it wasn't a dispute between two neighbors, but was an ongoing thing involving a commercial establishment, could this board also hear those cases and...
Sure, they can hear any noise disturbance complaint. So if you and Jesse file against...
Right.
Some commercial establishment.
But I guess that's... It's hard to imagine that $200 is gonna scare them very much, right? So I guess the question is, when it's not neighbors, but it's an actual, you know...
Permanent establishment.
Yeah, that's doing it every weekend. If people are complaining about it, is that something that requires a different type of situation? That's my last question.
That's when you maybe go ahead, skip the noise control board and go straight to the citation.
Yeah. Okay.
I do have a comment, of course, a question. And that is, is that the authority to have a noise control board exists in this ordinance today. But it has become, I guess the proper word would be dormant by virtue of the prior city councils in action with regard to appointing members. So do we need to do anything in this... In this document? Add any language to re... To kick it into gear? Or, you know, or do we... Or is that something require a separate action altogether? Or just a... Or no action necessarily at all, other than to announce that we are going to reconstitute the board?
I believe that's all that's needed, that it's just appointments need to be made, advertised to me. But I wanted to provide just another piece of information about the history of the board. And that is that while the board was constituted, the city manager, I guess, or the council authorized a nuisance officer to be hired. And the nuisance officer's job was to, among other things, enforce the noise ordinance. And the board was not having much activity. And it was determined, not officially, but informally, that this nuisance officer was gonna be able to deal with things. And I think that partly led to the demise of the board, the inaction and unwillingness to continue. So I think if we... If you, if the council just helps to find people to sit on it and makes appointments. There's a lot of background. There's... Hearing procedures are already developed by the prior board, and it could be made to work. If you decide you wanna proceed with that, it could be something we can advertise in the next newsletter. So even while you're on recess, at least some advertising of that can go on while you individually do whatever exploration you can do.
Councilmember Kreshi?
I just have one quick question. I know that this resolution, forgive me if I didn't see it, but I see that it lays out how the board elects its chairperson and vice-chairperson and the individuals that serve on the board. But will the board have... And then maybe, Jessie, you can provide some guidance on this. Will it have its own mechanism for self-regulating itself? Whether it be if there's any conflicts of interest that arise with the complaint that arises on their block or in an adjoining property? And then moreover, the whole hearing process and the timelines associated with when filings are to be made and how quickly a decision is made, and things of that nature?
Go ahead.
Well, for both the COLTA and the tree commission, the two bodies in the city that are most similar to this, the city attorney's office does provide staffing and usually writes the decision.
And then... So when you say they provide staffing, in what way?
They attend the hearing, review the exhibits, decide what should be... Give the board advice as needed.
So then, you know, if... The way I'm looking at this is from the standpoint of both somebody who's been accused of violating the noise ordinance for due process purposes and getting behind this issue, and somebody who wants, for lack of a better term, some justice for their inability to enjoy their home or whatever the case may be. What is a city attorney, and maybe you're not doing this, but what governs the process and the length of time of the process? And how quickly a decision is issued? And whether a fine needs to be issued and when that's done? Do you know what I mean?
Well, on your first question that you didn't ask, which was the conflicts of interest.
Right.
The city's ethics code would apply to appointed boards.
Okay.
As far as the others, there's usually procedures would set forth how long there is to answer. If an answer was required, decisions are usually, I think it even may even say in there, are supposed to be within approximately one month of the hearing.
Okay.
So most of that would be under the rules of procedure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on the noise control board? So if we could just do a show of hands, first on moving forward and I guess re-establishing the board, and then separately regarding the point about fines. So first, show of hands, who would like to re-establish the noise control board? One, two, three, four, five. And two did not raise their hands. And then in terms of what Councilmember Kovar raised, having this body be able to establish fines, how many are in favor of that? Show of hands. One, two...
And Mayor Stewart, I would say that my vote is with the caveat, as Councilmember Mail raised, that it's something that is within the authority of these types of bodies.
Yes, and as I said, we're not... We're gonna vote on this twice in January. This is just what do we keep in here now or ask the city attorney or staff to look into? So I think we can say the noise control board stays in for the next iteration of this, moving forward. And we will, I think, do you want... Can we just see another show of hands on the fines?
What's your question? Which way are you showing hands?
On supporting the board to be able to have fines, the authority. That was one, two, three, four. Okay, so it'll stay in there, too.
And just to clarify, in neither case was I voting against. I was just abstaining from voting.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
No, I understand.
All right. So for this time, for the next iteration, it will stay in the draft as we move forward. Are there any other issues we did not cover or questions? And just to quickly recap what I have in my notes, some of the big issues. Councilmember Smith raised appeals under the noise control board and how those are handled. We wanted to know about explicit exception for helicopters from the hospital. We have the copy of the Montgomery County ordinance that we can make sure members of the council see. I think we've talked about enforcement. Councilmember Mail would like to see additional language in the declaration of policy. We'd like in line 252, the compliance plan, more of a definition and who is involved with that. Some more definition there. And we're adding email notification to the noise control board, consistency of calling it the noise control board. And then finally, clarification on whether or not the board can levy a fine and how that is best done. Any others? Things that I missed that people wanted to make sure we got into the next? All right, I think that covers it. I think this work session is over. We'll take a 10-minute break and come back at 9:40 to deal with our last session. Considering providing funding to supplement 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant, and I believe I'm turning it over to the deputy city manager to walk us through this.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, the Montgomery County Collaboration Council was awarded a grant to span three years in the amount of about $1.1 million to provide after-school programming for children and classes for parents. The program is going to be administered by ACE, the African Arts, Culture and Education Academy, and it's, despite what this agenda item says, it's actually now scheduled to begin on December 14th. They'll have one Friday session before the school goes into their winter holidays. They're gonna be doing the training for the teachers on December 7th. The funding is gonna be split between two different locations. One is in Silver Spring, the other is at Essex House in Tacoma Park. And the space at the location in Silver Spring is for about 40 students and at Essex House, it will house between 25 and 30 students. The funding that the grant provides will permit after-school care for and education programming for Mondays through Thursdays. And earlier this year, Councilmember Smith was approached by the Montgomery County Collaboration Council and asked if it would be possible for the city to provide funding or help find funding to supplement the additional day each week for the academic year, and that's Friday. And so before you is an agenda item that provides some additional information about the program, including the cost. Something that's, that I wanted to clarify in the agenda item is that it refers to the additional cost being approximately $5,500 annually, and actually, that is for the remainder of the academic year. I wanted to clarify that. So what, what we're asking tonight is for some guidance from council, whether or not you would be willing to provide that supplemental funding for the grant in the amount of about $5,500 for the rest of the academic year. Since it's a three-year grant, it would come, you'd be faced with another decision during budget, the development of the budget for the next academic year. And that would, that would be more than the $5,500 that's referenced here. It'd be closer to about $10,000. And so Lynn Sobolov is the representative who Councilmember Smith and Mayor Stewart and I met with to learn more about the program, and I think she's joined us to answer any questions, any specific questions you might have about the program.
You were gonna mention about the two of the government.
Oh, and they, because they're starting on December 14th, we, we committed funding for that one Friday this month for the program in order to sort of buy time for you all to have a discussion about funding the program for the remainder of the academic year, which would start right after the holidays in January. And that totals up, it's, the program is about $240 a day, well, for Fridays. The Monday through Thursday is a little bit more expensive because they have some additional programming provided by Carpe Diem, I believe. And the African Immigrant Refugee Foundation.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to mention that Councilmember Smith has recruited himself from this conversation because he is now on the board of ACE, and that's happened in the interim. So, let's see, Councilmember Siemens, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for bringing this to us and for coming so late tonight to be with us. I, I think the key question for me is, what kind of metrics are you keeping track of to measure the benefit to the kids? I mean, we have after-school program here at the community center, but with the type of program that, that I understand you're offering, I think we're looking for more than just filling time.
Come to the microphone.
We have an external evaluator that we're required to employ that conducts not only surveys, but we also have pre-imposed tests and assessments that go along with the academic piece. It's a program called Voyager, and it's scientifically based in terms of their outcomes. So we definitely will have a lot to report on. We have a system called Efforts to Outcome software where we track participation, and there'll be a lot of measures in the different areas that we're addressing with service learning, character education. This is not just babysitting. It's definitely a very robust program.
And I apologize, I didn't catch your name.
Lynn Sobolov.
And with which organization?
With the Montgomery County Collaboration Council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So since you're up there, I know also when we met, you discussed there's a parent component of this as well, and I think that goes also to Councilmember Siemens' question and how this is different than, say, what we might already be offering in the city.
There will be not only ESOL classes, but also addressing areas such as job circles, ways to approach the endeavors to, to gain employment. So there'll be more specific components. We have a program called Strengthening Families that the Collaboration Council is offering as an in-kind service, and that's with a group of family members and their children, and there are measures attached to that. So everything we do will, will have a component that is assessed.
Based on my experience with similar families in the neighborhood, I think that one area that would be of great service to them is assistance in, or training in how for parents to deal with schools, to help their kids in the schools.
That's another area that we're hoping to strengthen because we have a lot of buy-in from the schools that are feeding into the two housing communities. So there'll be weekly visits. Our project director has already met with the principals at the four schools, and will be sharing information. We also plan to invite and have participation at family events from the school day. And the certified teachers, some of them are teachers from the regular day that are coming to the program at Essex House. So there's a lot of coordination.
What age range are you?
First grade through fifth grade.
Okay. And do you feel that you'll be able to enroll everyone at the Essex that's in that age range?
I am not privy to the entire scope, so I'm not sure, but space is a limitation. It really is. We want to be reasonable and not cram kids into a space that's not going to be good for creativity, dance, those sorts of things, as well as having small, quiet groups of learners. So, you know, if, I don't know if any of you've been to the space, but it's, it's a bit small. 25 is pretty much pushing the limit.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Mail?
Thank you. I think my questions are all the city staff, so just, you're welcome to stay there. Don't worry about the answers unless you really want to answer some of the questions. My, I have a few overall concerns about this proposal. One is that we have in the past tried to stick with our grant cycles, and I see this as a grant. We have had other times when there have been projects that were, that have come up in the middle of a year and gone either way in terms of deciding whether to fund those because something was happening, you know, in the immediate future. But particularly with a project that is so big, I guess I have a harder time seeing the urgency of, of this investment at this time as opposed to making a decision for the next budget year and trying to, you know, bring on that Friday programming in the next budget year. My second concern is, and it's come up along the lines of Councilmember Siemens' questions in many years past, about the city's programs. And I think the city rec department's budget has approximately doubled, so four and a half million dollars today was two and a half million dollars 10 years ago, something like that. And so we provide various forms of subsidized, and I'm not sure if it's all subsidized or, I don't know if any of our rec programs make a profit, let me say it that way, before-school, after-school, camp programs. Questions about the quality of those programs, questions about the extent to which our programs were competing with local providers of care like Tacoma Children's Center, Tacoma Park Child Development Center, pricing and whether our pricing is affecting their pricing and the ability of businesses to, to thrive and provide high-quality services. And so I bring that up as context to this question, not because I have any particular expertise with this program, but because it raises the question to me of why we provide a service with city staff, what the quality of that service is, and how we treat residents throughout the city fairly. So if I think of residents of the Aspen Court Department Building in Ward II, they're not gonna have this program. What programs do they have access to? Are those programs of lower quality? Do they ever, do we ever have a future where we can fairly provide them with access to these services? What's the role of the city government in, in childcare policy and programming, in education? And how do we pay for that? And so that's my sort of last question is if, you know, if there were a, if we were proposing a $5,000 offset, not funding, for example, the food pantry grant that we had awarded if we were in that cycle, I think that was $3,000, or otherwise finding a way to make a cut, I would be more inclined to support this project. But those are, those are my sets of concerns, and I think at some point, I hope we as a council have a broader conversation about what the city, what the city's taxpayers can afford in this space. Because as we know, and this in many other spaces, there is great need of people, and there always will be. And, you know, what is our role as a council in paying for those services versus what is our role as a council in advocating for the county, for the state, for the federal government to pay for services, to pay for programs? And I don't have the answers to those things, but for me, I would rather have this debate in the context of a more informed discussion over a longer period of time. Thank you.
I guess a couple of responses on that. I think that it's, it is very helpful to have that larger conversation about what the role of our various recreation programs are and that kind of thing. A number of our recreation programs do actually make more money. We do have a very generous subsidy program for people that don't, for families that don't have very much money. And we have, I think, very high-quality programs, so I appreciate what we offer on that. In this particular case, we have a situation where we have a program that just got brought to us that is exciting. It's getting lots of money from another source. It's nice to be able to partner, I think, on some opportunities to allow more students to participate in this. Many times, parents hesitate if their child can't go for five days when they're working as opposed to a program that has just four days. I would also prefer that it go through a grant cycle. I think that makes a lot of sense. But this came in the middle of a, an opportunity, middle of a time period, and I do think it's an appropriate steward, good stewardship of money when we can contribute, which is really a rather small amount of money, for a program that's significant. One of the things that I'm interested in, and I think some of the questions that Councilmember Siemens raised, go to this, and that is, is there something that we can learn by the metrics that they study, that their outcomes, that we can incorporate in some other programs or, you know, not make mistakes in the same way? And that's something that I'd like to be able to, to get, you know, hopefully as part of a partnership on this. So I actually do recommend going forward with the program as a responsible financial contribution. I also have real concern about residents of, say, Aspen Court and some other locations that I think we have opportunity for some programs, but maybe there's something that we can find out of this that's a model that we can expand or brings, hopefully bring somebody else in to do so that those residents are served. So I think that's what I can answer for right now.
Thank you. And actually, while we're on the topic of thinking about our process, I agree with Councilmember Mail that we have spent time, prior councils, talking about the process and adhering to it. And if my colleagues agree, I would actually like to ask our grants committee to think about this because I don't, this is, the idea that's a group, organization, or individuals are gonna come to us with opportunities when we're in between cycles, it happens, and I don't think it's actually gonna go away. And I'd rather we had a process to think about how we address out-of-cycle requests, and if the grant, if that's something the grants committee might be able to turn their attention to and give some thought to and some recommendations to us. I think it would be helpful. Councilmember Schultz?
[INAUDIBLE].
Oh, okay. Councilmember Kreshi?
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. So kind of you. I think, you know, looking at this objectively, this is an awesome program, you know, and I know I've had an occasion to meet folks at Essex House. I know some of them are, especially these kids are first-generation Americans. I think as somebody who is a first-generation American, I know some of the, some of the obstacles that you have to overcome, which not only include just having the generational gap that you do with your parents, but it's a language barrier, it's how you communicate on behalf of your parents to your school and things of that nature to make yourself successful. So I think, I think nobody on this So, I think, I think nobody on this council would disagree that the, the wisdom and the importance of this program is essential. I think my question, and I was going to raise what Councilmember Mail raised, which is how does this impact our city programs? Because I think it's a very valid point, and I think I would welcome a discussion on that. Mine is just related to as the program currently exists, Ms. Sobolov, is that right? So, why was it or is it now a Monday through Thursday program? And what is the basis of the need for a Friday program as well? And the only reason I ask that is actually members of the community actually inquired about that as well. As somebody who's a parent, Fridays tend to be more lax days. They trend to be days that, you know, families have their own events going on. So, it'd be just, I'd just be interested to know how you determine, why it was originally just a Monday through Thursday? Why wasn't it more streamlined Monday through Friday with the grant money you did have? And why was a decision made to do that versus how do you establish the need for a Friday program?
Well, as you noted, it is an expensive program, and there are a lot of components. Monday to Thursday was what originally the grants had required as something that we needed to address. Friday, once we've determined the people that were interested in participating, it was a request that parents made that they felt that they needed that Friday. It's not a day that they have the luxury of unfortunately, you know, spending with their families, but they need the support so that they can do what they need to do, whether it be work or, you know, that, that kind of thing.
And if I could just ask a follow-up, which I forgot to ask you, which is what efforts do you take, you know, even with the existing plan of Monday through Thursday? I understand, is that some, is this something that started today?
No, it's starting a week from today. We're doing training all week.
Okay, so I presume at this point now, you're advertising the after-school. Like, how are you ensuring success in terms of participation?
Well, we already have a full roster at Essex House, so, and people have signed up, signed for, you know, permissions, all the things they need to begin.
And does that, does that include just the youth, or does it include parents as well?
I'm not sure I understand.
Because I understand there is a component involving parents.
Well, that, that'll be starting after the holiday break, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just to supplement the information that Ms. Sobolov just provided, one of the questions that I asked when we met, when Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Smith and I met with Ms. Sobolov was whether or not it would be possible to reduce the number of hours Monday through Thursday and add those hours to the Fridays throughout the academic year. And it was my understanding that the program had to go from 3:30 until 6:30 in order to be eligible for the grant funding.
Right, they're very prescriptive. You have a half an hour where you must have snack, homework, help, one hour of uninterrupted academic support, which is our Voyager reading program, and one hour of academic enrichment, and that's the African arts and music and, and that component. So, 6:30, you can't reduce the, the amount of time. That's what we have.
And also, just to add more information, I think one of the ideas that we went back with also if there was some way that the parents could also, the families could also contribute, but under this grant, the program is not allowed to ask for contributions or any payment for the program. Councilmember Schultz?
So, the parents contribute? The parents contribute $0 to this effort? That's okay. This is all new to me. So, pardon the, some of my questions because I've never heard of the Montgomery County Collaboration Council. That may not necessarily be your fault either. Where does the money come, ultimate source of this money come from? I haven't heard that.
The U.S. Department of Education has over a billion dollars that they pass to the states, and I believe it's based on percentage of free and reduced lunch in each state. So, every state has appropriated a certain, a certain amount of money to give out, and then they have a grants competition and awarded grants. We found out the end of October, I believe, that we were awarded a grant.
So, you got, so you got this large grant that could serve two different locations for three years.
Correct.
How was it that you selected Essex House as opposed to some other property?
Well, CPDC came to us and asked if we knew of possible support for after-school programs because they really needed the support. And at that time, we, we didn't have anything from our organization, but when the opportunity came to apply for a 21st Century Grant, and we had been successful in a, a past grant competition, we suggested that we could assist with that.
Okay. And the hours, you say from 3:30 to 6:30?
Well, really from when school lets out, and now that it's later, it's a little bit later.
Approximately three hours then. Right.
It's more like two and a half, I think, now.
Okay. One of the things that, that interests me, because this seems like an awful lot of money, the, the big figures here, is that we, you know, we run this lunch and learn program during the summertime that takes care of 120 students for six weeks, five days a week, on a whole lot less money than this. And so, and, and it's staffed pretty heavily by trained people that know what, you know, because, that are capable and know what they're doing. It's so, I did some quick math here, there's 475,000. So, this funding will be allocated proportionate with the number of students served, so approximately $475,000 will be, will benefit Tacoma Park residents over the three years as the program currently stands. If you divide that by 25 children, that's working out to $19,000 in round numbers per kid over three years. And I, you know, I, I just did, it just seems like a lot of money that, that's being spent on, on a program in a small room for 25 kids. Not saying that the out, product, the outcome, isn't going to be worth it. We'll, we'll just assume that it will be. But when I compare this to the lunch and learn program in the city mentally, but I can't do it mathematically because I don't know the numbers, it just seems like an awfully expensive form of assistance. And if I had the time, I'd like to sort of understand why the budget is what it is for this particular program as to be, where, where the actual expenses go. But we don't have the time or the information on that, or none of that information is, is supplied in the particular handout that I have.
Do you want me to give you some?
Well, yes. I think it would be, be helpful to us to be able to figure out the, the answer to that question so that we have, we can compare apples and apples.
Eight percent of the budget goes to the external assessor, the person who's doing the evaluation component. We also have teaching artists who are, you know, they're actual artists in the field, and they come and do special presentations. We have field trips such as one to the Smithsonian, the African Arts Museum, the parent component, which is an added cost, professional development, which we really emphasize, this is a full week of training, and people are paid for their time. And it also costs to have high-quality training. The group that we're bringing in for the character education is called Move This World, and they do a lot of work in school systems. And, you know, we're really hoping that we, we can affect more people than just the people that are participating, but that there will be other ways to engage other people in addition to developing partnerships. So, it really ends up affecting a lot more than just that group.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'd still want to see the, the actual allocation of funds.
I think it might be worth noting that all of the, the programs and programming that Ms. Sobolov just described are going to happen on Mondays through Thursdays, whether or not the city council decides to fund, to provide the supplemental fundings. As far as the, the $5,500 figure here goes, that was based on three teachers per day making between $20 and $25 an hour, plus an additional 10 meals for students who don't qualify for free or reduced lunch, I'm sorry, free or reduced meals on those Fridays with a 10% administration fee on top of that. So, that's how that, that ballpark of $5,500 was arrived at. And that's over the course of, I believe, 23 Fridays for the remainder of the academic year.
23 Fridays. Okay.
That's right, Siemens.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to give support to Councilmember Mail's request that we talk about the grant process and how we would consider or not consider out-of-cycle grant requests in the future. Pardon?
That's my idea.
Oh. And Mayor Stewart's. But I share the concern that we have a process, and it would be nice to, to see us follow that more tightly than we have in the past. I, I think Councilmember, it was Councilmember Mail that did raise the question about whether it's appropriate for us to be spending city money on this type of program or other, you know, food programs and everything. I'll go on record now to say I think it definitely is. We are talking about our local residents, and I think it's highly appropriate for us to, to be helping in these areas where the long-term benefit will be so great for the But as regards this request, I've got to look at it not as, you know, 400,000 or whatever the number was, I've got to look at the request, which is $5,500, as compared to what is the benefit going to be. And I think it's going to, that $5,500 is to make this program more workable and more plausible for success, and so I do support it. I think it's, as the city manager said, a relatively small amount of money for a overall great benefit to the, the residents of that one building. And it saddens me that we're not talking about not just Aspen Court, but the Pinecrest Neighborhood, the New Hampshire Towers Apartments, and the many other locations where we have many large immigrant population. We have a large number of kids who could benefit from a program like this. I'm sure there are kids living in North Tacoma, which is a more well-to-do neighborhood, who could also benefit from it. But we've got to start somewhere, and I think this is a, a nice, another step. You know, the lunch and learn program was a, was a good step in addressing this, these issues, and this sounds like a huge step forward over that. So, I fully support it, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. And I just say, I echo what Councilmember Siemens said. This sounds like a terrific program and fills a need. Last week, this council passed a resolution welcoming Syrian refugees, and much of the conversation residents have asked since then is what are we doing in our community to welcome immigrant families and, and making sure that they have the support system? And I think, given what program you're looking at putting in Essex House, this is one of the ways that we can say that we are helping immigrant families. And so, I'm also fully supportive of it, and I'd just like to echo what the city manager said, that I hope this is the start of a wonderful friendship and partnership moving forward. I think we have a lot to learn, and, and would just also encourage, as we move forward, if this, if the council does move forward this in the future years, years two and three, we figure out how we put this into our normal process so that we can continue the partnership. So, I see no lights now, and so this was a work session item, and so if we could just see a show of hands of folks who would like to move this forward, and then it'll come back to us in, I'm looking at the city manager, in January is part of a budget amendment?
We have it. It's part of, yeah, we have a January budget.
In the January budget amendment. So, can I see a show of hands of those who support this coming back in a January budget amendment? And one, two, three, four, five. Those opposed, when opposed. And that is it for us tonight. We're adjourned.